Seeing none, there are no awards or proclamations, so we'll go to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on 2008 Special Assessment Projects, Sub-Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 0810448, Levying Special Assessments for Improvements.
And who's handling this?
Mayor, I can take care of that.
Okay.
Carlton's not here today. The item is really the first reading of Ordinance 0810448, Levying Special Assessments for Streets, Drainage, Water and Sewer Improvements for the 2008 Special Assessment Projects. On April 28, the City Commission received a final breakdown of costs for these special assessment projects. The city clerk has published the notice of these and have sent out letters to the property owners within the benefit districts. There are seven projects that we are dealing with. The property owner's share of these is $2,497,368.48. The city's share of these is $78,629.94. Total project cost for all seven of these projects is $2,575,998.42. The public hearing is intended to receive input from interested parties and particularly the property owners within the special assessment benefit district. The primary issue at this point in the process is not whether the special assessments should be levied against the properties, but rather that the final costs have been calculated and distributed. The action sets the foundation for the final determination of assessments after the public hearing. The assessments so determined will play a significant role in the retirement of the associated debt over the next 15 years. Staff recommends approval on first reading of Ordinance Number 0810448, Levying Special Assessments for Streets, Drainage and Utility Improvements for the 2008 Special Assessment Projects.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Are there questions of staff? From the commission? If not, comments from the public? If there are any, please come forward, state your name and your address. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of Ordinance Number 0810448 concerning special assessments on first reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance Number 0810448, Levying Special Assessments on Streets, Drainage, Water and Sewer Improvements for the 2008 Special Assessment Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 5-0.
Item 5.2, Public Hearing on Petition Number 4305, Requesting Vacation of 199.36 Feet of Platted Restricted Access Along the West Side of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Lundberg Addition. Sub-Item 5.2A, First Reading Ordinance Number 0810449.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, this is a petition that has been received from the Virgil E. Lundberg and Dorothy E. Lundberg Trust. And the request that is before you is to vacate a portion of the platted restricted access along the west side of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Lundberg Addition. I think if you are familiar with the property, it's located at the northeast corner of Cloud in Ohio. It was platted in 1982, but it's essentially been farmed since that time. There's a row of trees along Ohio Street there, and the primary use of the property since the time it was platted and zoned has been agriculture. In 1990, there was a permit issued for construction of the Manuel Foursquare Church. That is on Lot 2 of this subdivision. And the northern portion of that lot was set aside as a drainage easement to accommodate a pond that would serve as detention for both Lot 1 and Lot 2. The original street access for this site was Cloud Street on the south, Claflin Avenue on the north, except for the west, 150 feet which remain in place. All of Claflin Avenue east of Ohio has been vacated. Part of the reason for keeping it in place at Ohio Street was to provide for continued access into the site and that location. When this property was platted in 1982, there was access control placed along the entire Ohio Street frontage. And one of the reasons for that was that it was not clear how the property would be developed. There was no specific plan, and so you could not anticipate where an appropriate location for driveway would be. And it wasn't clear at the time. Because of the zoning, it could have been a grocery store, or apartments, or any number of things. We now have a proposal from Compro Realty. They are marketing and proposing to develop this site as an office park. The office park they're proposing would occupy the entire property. If they were to build the Claflin Avenue extension from Ohio and would also have driveways on Cloud Street, that's what they would be allowed today. They've been working with an engineer to come up with a design for a well-placed entrance on Ohio Street. I would describe the plan that's in your packet as very conceptual, but that is somewhat of a master plan of how they envision that property developing. And the request was to open up nearly 200 feet of access control because they weren't sure, based on the final configuration, where the best location would be within that area. So we've attempted to address that with conditions. This would be the same statutory process as we use for vacating an easement or an alley. There's a public notice and hearing required. I think we've shared with you before that the purpose of restricting access on streets like Ohio is to minimize curb cuts and turning points, hopefully maintain traffic flow and reduce accidents. If you drive down Ohio between, say, Cloud and McAdams, you'll see very few driveways on the east side, whereas on the west side, there's a number of individual driveways. And that's just a function of how the property was platted. There should be no impact on the City of Salina if this request is approved. It would be a privately constructed curb cut and driveway entrance built to city standards. In our discussions with the applicant, we indicated that staff would support a single well-placed driveway entrance. And so the recommendation that's before you reflects that, which would be to open up restricted access within the area requested to allow one 45-foot driveway with a center median within that area. There would be some flexibility on where that would be located, but it would be no closer than 200 feet from Cloud or 200 feet from Claflin. And then finally, that the final design for turning radius and center median and pavement markings would be approved by the city engineer before a permit is issued to construct that driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, I'd be able to address any questions you have. And we do have, I believe, Representative Compro here if you have questions about the development.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I was just wondering, this was originally planted in 82, and I noticed that when I drove the street again this morning, that there are actually no curb cuts anywhere on the east side for 11 long blocks, all the way from Albert to McAdams. There's something that looks like a curb cut up at the Nazarene Church, but it lines up with the street and goes clear through the property on Kerwin Street, I think. But at any rate, seeing that all those have been successfully developed, everything except this has been successfully developed without another curb cut, I just wonder why this one's necessary. But I was really, I guess the real question is, was there an active city policy in the early 80s that resulted in that, that limited restriction to all those east side of Ohio streets? When it was light?
I believe there is one, I guess what we would consider a driveway opening to the Nazarene Church.
Right.
I guess our response to that is that if you drive that frontage, there's probably not a piece of property that has 600 feet of individual frontage on Ohio Street. And I think that might, that might be the difference here. If this were...
This block is longer than...
Yes. If you were to look at Russell, which is west of Ohio, which doesn't go through, this location for this driveway would be about match-up where Russell would be if it did extend through. So if you were looking at this from a plating standpoint, that would probably be a reasonable location to have a street that would be platted between Claflin and Cloud. But I guess that would be the distinction. I would agree that the, most of the development that's on the east side of Ohio is accessed from the side streets, not from direct driveways, except for the Nazarene Church, I believe. But from staff's standpoint, it was looking at 600 feet of frontage, and was it reasonable to have one opening within that 600 feet? And it would be just as reasonable if it were a street.
What about the idea of putting that access on Cloud or Claflin?
Well, they will have access to Cloud. They will be able to construct driveways on Cloud. Their desire was to have a principal or main entryway on Ohio Street.
But they, and they are still going to use Claflin. They're going to open up Claflin, too, so there'll actually be two on.
Yeah. If you look at the conceptual plan, if Claflin got constructed, that would be an intersection with Ohio, and people could enter or exit there, a center location, and then one, obviously you could turn on Cloud Street and enter farther to the east. Again, this is very conceptual, and I would defer to the applicant as far as how close to how this would be developed, this drawing really is.
There's a, there's a light right now on Cloud, is that right? Correct. Or is it Claflin?
It's Cloud.
Cloud.
It's a, it's a full signal with left turn lanes on Ohio.
Right. And then there isn't a light until, is it Republic as you're going on Ohio?
Republic is the next set of signals.
Okay.
That big vacated Claflin Avenue right to the north, who? Is that where the ownership split?
That, that was a dividing line. To the north of that line is Sterling House and a vacant, there's still a vacant parcel between, that's south of Kerwin, north of Claflin, on the east side of Ohio. And then you have Sterling House in there, and then some apartments. And so when Claflin was vacated, a portion of the property went to the south owner and a portion to the north owner.
Comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for action.
Another question of Dean. Your staff report makes note that that's one of the busiest streets in the city, but doesn't speak to whether a curb cut at this particular junction would be good, bad, or indifferent. Plan Department have any thoughts on that, or?
Well, I think we indicated in our recommended action that we were supportive of a single well-placed driveway entrance in that location. It roughly matches up with the driveway that is across the street that comes out of the Countryside Plaza over there with Papa John's. And so we would, we would work to try to get those to match as closely as possible, because that way, there are already people exiting onto Ohio at that location. And so that, that separation is roughly equal to the closest driveway on the west side. And that, that property was platted in 2001, so that, that was looked at pretty recently.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I think that the present traffic pattern works pretty well. I think that having a temptation to go directly across Ohio that close to the intersection at Cloud and Ohio is, without any traffic control, I suppose there's stop signs, or you're supposed to stop when you leave a parking lot. But I don't really see that there's any public convenience value to this. I think with a little more creative site planning, the Claflin and Cloud accesses would be adequate for this shopping business center. So I'd move that the application be denied.
Can I, could we request comment from the applicant on that?
We either need to have a second...
You would have to have a second.
...or the motion will die from lack of a second.
I'll second that if I need to do that, to get him up here.
It's been moved and seconded to deny, uh... Ordinance, uh, 0810449, denying the petition, uh, Number 4305, filed by the Virgil E. Lundberg and Dorothy E. Lundberg Trust, Number 2, requesting vacation of 199.36 Feet of Platted Restricted Access along the west side of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Lundberg Addition of the City of Salina. Is there any discussion?
I, I want to, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
I'm Jeff Mace, 102 South Presley with Compro Realty. Uh, what specific question would you want me to answer, Alan?
Well, is that access needed?
Uh, actually, our original conversations with the city when the due diligence period was being done, was that it was never the intention, when the restricted access was put in, for, to always limit it. They wanted control once they got to a point where we knew what the development was going to be, where it would be, and in what fashion it would be implemented. So the project is, has moved forward presuming that, that curb cut. In regard to the hard corner, it's absolutely needed. If we're able, if we're able to pursue the current retailer that we're dealing with, they will immediately walk away on its face if it's, if that's, if this application's denied, or if we're unable to get access at that point. And I'm not sure, I can absolutely speak to the hard corner. I can tell you that there is, that we're very close with the financial institution, as you see in the site plan, that I'm pretty confident that that will be a, be a major issue with them as well. They chose that particular location in the overall development specifically because that's where the, the main ingress and ingress to the, to development would most likely occur. Basically, we've moved forward from the get-go with the assumption that this would, this would be a process that would be approved by discussing the whole idea with staff, so...
Um, this drawing that we have doesn't show up.
Yeah, it does. Turn the page.
This is apparently the drive-in bank that he's talking about. Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong page.
The, as far as the state of the development currently, we are finalizing plans as we speak for the construction of that center along Ohio. We're well down the road of negotiating with the hard corner and have meetings this week with two, with two different groups, professional services groups, to be in the rear of the development. So is what you, the back is more fluid than the front, as you look at that site plan, as far as where we are today. Assuming the approval of this application, we anticipate being done with the center and having tenants in place by the end of the year.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
I think that on reflection, I do have some sympathy with some qualms, obviously, and a certain level of agreement with Mr. Perney. However, I'm, when in doubt, I'd like to defer to people who have more expertise on it than me, so I think I'll withdraw that second.
So you need a new motion?
So do you need another motion?
So the original motion has died for lack of a second. So once again, I will bring it before the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move, we adopt Ordinance Number 08-10449, requesting vacation of 199.36 Feet of Platted Restricted Access along the west side of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Lundberg Addition to the City of Salina, Kansas. Subject, should I, do I need to read the subject to the following provisions on there, or not?
I think you can simply refer to it, Commissioner.
Okay. Subject to the provisions listed under recommended action on our blue sheets.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 0810449, approving petition Number 4305 on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. Commissioner Perney voting against.
Item 5.3, Public Hearing on Resolution Number 086518, Exempting Property Owned by Grain Belt Supply Company Incorporated, Located at 217 East Diamond Drive, From Advilorium Taxation.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, this is an application comes before you requesting a property tax exemption for a new warehouse and fabrication facility that's proposed up on East Diamond Drive. The location of the, the building itself would probably be closer to Gold Road and would be located in the area where you recently saw an application to plat and rezone property at the corner of Diamond Drive and North Fifth Street. The plan is to build a building approximately 50,000 square feet in size that would add additional warehouse and fabrication space. The projection is, as a result of this facility expansion, up to 16 new jobs would be created. This application's been reviewed, and it does meet the eligibility requirements for a property tax exemption under state law. It involves a manufacturing business and new building improvements. Previous to last year, the purchase of machinery and equipment was something that could also be part of a local property tax exemption. But due to a change in state law, those purchases are automatically exempt from property taxes on a statewide basis, so that's not part of the local decision-making process. We have notified the school district and the county commission of the request for the exemption, and this is a public hearing to consider whether that should be granted. Our estimates were that, based on our application and our local formula, that an exemption of 92% in years 1 through 5, and 46% in years 6 through 10 would result. The final exemption would be determined once they've completed the project and completed their hiring. After that 10-year exemption, the entire project would become fully taxable. Following closure of the public hearing and any questions that you would want to see addressed, if you wish to approve this request, you should adopt the attached resolution, which would grant Grain Belt Supply a property tax exemption. With that, I'd be able to answer any questions about our local program. We do have representatives of Grain Belt Supply here as well.
Okay. Now I'll open the public hearing. Dean, have there been other businesses up in that part of town?
It is, this is kind of a pocket of industrial. Most of the other businesses in that location are more service-to-travelers type businesses, and they're not eligible for property tax exemption under the state exemption laws. So I can't think of any other business north of I-70 that has been granted an exemption, primarily because most of the others up there are, are service or retail-oriented businesses.
Okay.
Our most recent exemption was approved for the Bergkamp Manufacturing, which was down on Shilling Road. But this, this particular state property tax exemption is primarily targeted towards industrial or manufacturing businesses.
Can I ask how long Grain Belt has been there, at that location?
I think I would defer that to Mr. Wingo, but I, I believe I saw a first permit out there in 1974, but it might, might have been even earlier than that.
And do you know the schedule? I know we've been through the replating process as far as construction.
From a standpoint of having the zoning and plating in place, they are, they are good to go as far as building. We've had some preliminary discussions with them about their building plans, but the property is, is ready to go in terms of application for a building permit.
Any other questions of staff? If not, take public comment. Anyone from the public would care to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt Resolution Number 08-6518, Approving Property Tax Exemption for Grain Belt Supply Company.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 086518, Approving An Application For Property Tax Exemption Submitted by The Grain Belt Supply Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Go on to the consent agenda, please.
Item 6.1, Approve The Minutes Of May 5, 2008. Item 6.2, Authorized Agreement With The Kansas Department Of Transportation And Wilson And Company Incorporated For The Construction Engineering Services Related To The Broadway-Hagelman Street Intersection Improvements. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 086519, Concurrent Of Award Of Contract For The Broadway Boulevard And Hagelman Street Intersection Improvements.
Is there any item that the commissioner would like pulled from the consent agenda?
May I be of any interest? I'm mistaken. I think there's some people that don't want to speak to 6.2 and 6.3, so I would suggest that we remove those.
6.2 and 6.3?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need a motion here? Do we need a motion to remove those items?
Oh, thanks.
No, I don't believe so. I believe, Mayor, you can do that.
Okay, how about approving the minutes then?
I'd move that the minutes of May 5 be approved as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0. 6.2, Mr. Frazier, do you want to take that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Broadway Boulevard-Hagman Street Intersection Improvements Project is included in the city's 2008 capital improvement program. On May 23, 2005, the city commission accepted a 90-10 grant for up to $500,000 from the Kansas Department of Transportation for traffic safety improvements at the intersection of Broadway Boulevard and Hagman. The attached agreement between Wilson &amp; Company and the city of Salina and KDOT provides for construction engineering services for the Broadway-Hagman Intersection Improvement Project. This contract is written in a cost-plus-fixed fee format with the amount not to exceed $43,993.14. City responsibility for 10% of the participating costs plus 100% of the non-participating costs. The only non-participating cost associated with the project is the transportation of the pedestrian overpass, kind of the walkway, the bridge, that is part of the project. The total commitment on behalf of the city for this portion of the project would be $4,724.65. The local share of this project is coming from gas tax funds and is split between items within the CIP budget. It is recommended that the city commission approve the agreement for construction engineering services between the city of Salina, Kansas Department of Transportation, and Wilson &amp; Company for the Broadway and Hagman Improvement Project, KDOT Project Number 85U-2109-01. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
May I be of any idea, I'd move that we authorize the agreement for project number 05-1538, agreeing with KDOT, Wilson &amp; Company for construction engineering services related to Broadway Boulevard and Hagman Street intersection improvements.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve an agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation, Wilson &amp; Company, for the construction engineering services related to Broadway Boulevard and Hagman Street intersection improvements, project number 05-1538. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. 6.3?
Item 6.3.
I'm sorry?
6.3.
Did that include item 6.3?
No.
Item 6.3, resolution number 08-6519, concurrence of award of contract for the Broadway Boulevard and Hagman Street intersection improvements.
Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the Broadway Boulevard and Hagman Street Intersection Improvement Project is included in the 2008 capital improvement program. On May 23, '05, the city commission accepted a 90-10 grant of up to $500,000 from KDOT for traffic safety improvements at the intersection of Broadway and Hagman. The proposed project involves the realignment of the intersection at Hagman, closure of the north leg of the intersection, and removal of the existing pedestrian bridge. Upon approval of the project agreement on October 2, '06, city commission expressed interest in generating public input regarding the project. Over 60 citizens attended a public forum on October 26 of '06. Comments, suggestions were taken by staff and discussed with KDOT and Wilson &amp; Company officials, and the design was revised to incorporate many of these suggestions. Some of those would include the cul-de-sac design was modified to allow a right-in lane from Broadway. The Broadway-Cloud intersection will be modified to improve pedestrian and traffic safety. A pedestrian study will be conducted by the city in cooperation with USD 305 to establish the need and the location of a safe, possible signalized pedestrian crossing of Broadway Boulevard between Cloud Street and South 9th Street. City staff will collaborate closely in the future with the developer of the vacant property east of Broadway and Hagman regarding a possible fourth leg of a new intersection. After completion of the pedestrian study, the route to schools established for students affected by the removal of the pedestrian bridge was established and by design. Staff is coordination, is in coordination with the students from the South Middle School. Additional sidewalk was added in 2007 sidewalk projects to be able to complete this and the route proposed study. KDOT grant of 90-10, cost share was a maximum of $500,000. The city of Salina is responsible for all designated engineering costs, right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocation, and all construction and construction engineering costs exceeding $500,000. The city will be responsible for 10% of the participating cost plus 100% of the non-participating costs. The city's share of the project will be $46,925.06. If approved, the amount will need to be sent to KDOT Bureau of Fiscal Services on or before May 16, 2008, in order to guarantee the bid. It is recommended that the city commission authorize the adoption of resolution 08-6519 and for the mayor to sign the authority to award contract commitment of the city funds for the Broadway-Hagman Intersection Improvement Project, number 85U-2109-01, city project number 05-1538. Be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Questions of staff? Public comment?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Think I've been up on this project several times, one of the 60.
Excuse me, sir, could you give us your name and address?
Merlin Stevens, 340 Maple, Salina. Lived there 40 years. Used this, my kids used the crosswalk, everything. I just give Mr. Frazier a little implant that I have not been able to get back from the city. He said he would talk to me afterwards, but I want to know, I would like to know how much this is costing and what the bid, or has it been let? And has it? Because I have been trying to call with one of your individuals here in the city office, and I've had a few runs-arounds and a few comments. The traffic has been told me that the USD 305 has been sent down to Otto Street, which you approved a sidewalk from Wayne east to the school, middle school there off of Wayne. There was two or three blocks that you had, cement sidewalk you put from Otto that comes off of 9th Street and across through there, the houses and everything. That was approved. The sidewalk is in. They are telling me that all the kids are going to Otto Street rather than going across Broadway and down there. They are not. They are still coming down Broadway, because I live on Broadway. My backyard is Broadway. The kids are walking down that street. They are coming out of Indian Village and places across there. As I just give them that there was supposed to be, my understanding, the crosswalk moved to the south side of Cloud and Broadway. It is on the north side now, but it is not on the south side. And if you are going to put 600-foot of cement sidewalk along the west side of Broadway, then I think we, as individuals, should be entitled to a crosswalk on the south side rather than going across the street to the north side again to get back east. And you know people are going to jaywalk. They do it here in Santa Fe. And I'm assuming that this is going to happen down there, too, but I'm very disappointed that we haven't got it. We don't know when that light is going to be put in until that rest of that city, somebody sells that or buys that project over there. It was originally Joe Crumburgers, and it's in a place in St. Louis right now. But anyway, also, Brown Mackey was brought up at this, and they were supposed to take care of Brown Mackey. Brown Mackey, I think we have called the police enough that they have realigned and put some yellow signs there and lines there that people do not park on Otto now. But they have moved the rest of the cars into the neighborhood. And I thought there was supposed to be a solution, that they were supposed to be trying to get some room from the mall that they could park their cars over there. That's when Brown Mackey went out there, was Fort Parking Area, and they still don't have it because enrollment just existed so much more. And I think that's some of the main things that I'm interested in, and I have not heard too much and got so satisfaction. And this is why I'm here today, because I think it's up to, and I'm one of the few that are still complaining about this, but there is a lot of people that have been asking me for the many months that this has been going on about it. So, with that premises, I would like to find out what is going to be done to those things or if it is in the project or what the solution is. Thank you.
We have with us Tim Miles from Wilson &amp; Company here today that might be able to better answer some of those questions. Seeing that our city engineer is not here to be able to respond to those, Tim should be able to help us with that.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm Tim Miles with Wilson &amp; Company, and I was at the meetings with Mr. Stevens, and that was back when Sean O'Leary was here as well. The intersection improvements at, or the traffic signal crossing at Broadway and Cloud was not really a part of this intersection, but I do know that Sean had promised that he would put a crossing to accommodate the pedestrians that use the Broadway-Hagman overpass that's coming out. As far as the traffic study, I don't have a lot of information on that. I'd kind of heard bits and pieces of it. And there's not a real direct route from the Broadway-Hagman area over to South Middle School. And so, the kids do kind of find their own ways through there. I don't know that the intersection crossing at Cloud and Broadway is going to help the middle school portion of that, but there was some talk, or some promises by Mr. O'Leary to allow pedestrians to cross there. And we are adding sidewalk, as Mr. Stevens said, along the west side of Broadway, which would connect up to there and allow pedestrians a safe place to cross. I don't know if that addresses most of his questions or not, but it sounds like the improvements to Broadway and Hagman aren't complete yet to your satisfaction. Is that correct? I'm not familiar. I kind of was under the impression that the crossing was going to be on the south side of the intersection, like Mr. Stevens mentioned, but it sounds like something's been added to the north, so I don't know what city staff has done as far as that is concerned.
Commissioners, without checking with our city engineer, I can't tell you the exact location that the crossing will be. But what I can tell you is, there was a lot of talk with a lot of students at South Middle School and trying to determine the best location that would actually be used by the most numbers of kids. You know, you can look all over town and find school crosswalks, lighted, signalized crossings, and you'll find that a majority of the kids will use them. But there are times when those, sometimes they'll cross a mid-block or not want to wait for the signal or whatever that might be. And we've seen that even with the investment on North Ohio to get to the middle school there, that not all the time will the kids utilize that. But our objective is to talk with those kids who actually travel the route and, again, try to get the most that we can based on that. And that's what you typically try to do. Certainly, we did do that. So, whatever the final path is, it was determined based on discussions with the kids that go to school there that would use it.
I remember those conversations. We don't have the planes in front of us. Is that signalized crossing on the south or the north?
I believe Mr. Stevens said it's on the north side of the intersection. Is there a crosswalk there?
Yes, there is a crosswalk on, there is a crosswalk on the north side, and the sidewalk's on the north side, but there's nothing across there. And from that little motel over there, they've got about six or eight rooms that's rented out, and they go right across to that filling station, jaywalk right past there. And when they put that sidewalk in, they're still going to do it. And we, coming up to the sidewalk, how are we going to get across? If you use this disability, it's pretty tough. There's a lot of places it's pretty tough to get around. But I was under the impression with Sean O'Leary when we was talking about it, that light was the main issue, but it was already the type that could be changed. And they was going to put a left-hand turn in there. The left-hand turn is probably fine, because you're going to need it on Rush Street anyway. Because you're going, I think Mayor Vaneer was commissioner at the time and said this is going to be a disaster anyway, because Rush is about 20 feet from that situation, and you're going to put people up there and more people on the north side. And I know that crosswalk is going to be tough to get there, but I was under the impression all they'd have to do is take out some cement and put a crosswalk in there and change the light that it was already up to standard at the time. Now, I, that is my solution, and I'm very disappointed.
Commissioners, quite honestly, most of the-
That's what I'm saying is, we can have a 1,000,007 bicycle trail down Ohio Street. We should at least have a turning signal on South Cloud. Thank you.
The trail isn't 1.7 million. But back to this. First of all, most of the discussion related to the path of the kids and those who would cross came far after Sean left. So, to me, that's not even relevant. Most of it was due to this pedestrian study that was done. What we can do is, if it would make you more comfortable, we can pull this off for a week, go back, take a look at that study, and put the rest of those pieces together to this. Because what we're talking about up at that intersection, I don't believe then it's included in the scope, is what you're saying, Tim?
Right, yeah. KDOT deemed that that was not part of the scope of this. So, that's something that city staff may need to address at that intersection.
Yeah, just need to check with the city engineer to see how that discussion of that issue progressed and what the plans are specifically for that. If you'd like us to do that, be happy to do that.
I guess my question then would be, according to the blue sheets, the payment needs to be in by the 6th, by Friday, I believe, the 16th of May. And if we pull this, do we lose the bid and what happens then?
Well, that's a good question. Given that it's outside the scope of this anyway, I don't see any reason why you couldn't move forward with this.
That's my question. The stoplight could be handled at a later date.
Absolutely.
If that's the issue.
Yeah. Yeah, given the timeline, I'd recommend you go ahead and move forward with this, and then we'll come back, take a look at that intersection question and bring that back to you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I would move that we approve resolution 08-6519, concurring with the award of contract for Broadway Boulevard and Hagman Street Intersection Improvements, project number 05-1538. And ask staff to report back to us on the, what would be the proper way to word it, on the status of that signalized crossing at the intersection of Broadway and Cloud? That'd be the proper way to word it? Okay.
It's been moved and seconded that we- It's been moved and seconded that we approve adopt resolution zero-eight six-five-one-nine, awarding contract for the Broadway Boulevard and Hagman Intersection Improvements Project All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes five-zero. Development business, there is none, we'll move on to administration.
Item eight point one, second reading ordinance number zero-eight ten thousand four hundred forty-seven, amending chapter eight, article one of the Salina Code by adding section eight dash twelve point six, amending section one zero-zero-four point one, point two of the two thousand three international building code to modify the occupant load factor for manufacturing facilities.
This ordinance was passed on first reading, May fifth, and since that time, there have been no comments have been received. Is there anyone from the public that would care to comment on this? Now I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number zero-eight dash ten-four-four-seven on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance zero-eight one-zero-four-four-seven on second reading, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Joka?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Mayor Vaneer?
Aye. Motion passes five-zero.
Item eight point two, second reading ordinance number zero-eight ten thousand four hundred forty-six, amending chapter forty-two, article six, division fourteen, sections forty-two dash three oh-two and forty-two dash three oh-three, and adding section forty-two dash three oh-three point one pertaining to permitted and conditional uses in the C four district.
Mr. Andrew?
Yeah, we didn't want to necessarily reopen discussion of this matter, but the, just wanted to make sure that we had properly reflected the will of the commission as to the, the two amendments, as we understood them. There was a first amendment that eliminated many warehouses, payday loan companies, tattoo parlors, and then a follow-up that eliminated massage parlors, and so we've, we've done, we've tried to reflect that in the ordinance that is attached for second reading, and then we thought for the future and for, to clearly document the intent, we added a section forty-two three oh-one point one that, that clearly spelled those out as prohibited uses, so people didn't have to infer anything just from the fact that they weren't listed. And so those were the modifications that were made since first reading, and so we just wanted to make sure our ordinance on second reading clearly and correctly followed those two amendments.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions, Dean?
I likewise even want to reopen that discussion from last week, but my question looking at this was, is that forty-two point three oh-three point one even necessary?
It's probably not absolutely necessary, but if, if you were, you were a commissioner or a zoning administrator or somebody in, in the future, you would have to do a lot of, of research and things to see that those had been specifically excluded rather than just simply not being mentioned. So it seemed like if, if the idea was to, to clearly state an intent that those be prohibited, that those be listed in that way, there, there could be other uses that might materialize in the future that, that there might be a clear intent to prohibit, so that section could be useful in the future. Is it absolutely necessary? No. But there are, there are zoning ordinances out there that list specific prohibited uses. We did it with the North Ohio overlay district, we specifically prohibited some uses in that overlay, but that just seemed, in terms of documenting the decisions that were made, that seemed to be the way to reflect that most clearly.
Are there any further questions?
We kept pawn shops out of that, is that correct?
Pawn shops were shifted to the conditional-
Correct.
-category, but they were not prohibited.
Okay, good.
And then I, I wanted to point out that we did item forty-four under permitted uses as massage therapy, as to distinguish that from massage parlors, so.
Okay, if there are no other questions, public comment?
Commissioners, first of all, I'd like to explain my absence at last meet, Monday's meeting. I was in a session with your comprehensive planning consultants at the same time your commission was meeting on this very issue and was not able to be here. However, I did think that the staff from the city, staff from SDI, the Lee District Board of Advisors, and the City Planning Commission had all done very due diligence on compiling this list and making the recommendations to you, and I absolutely had no concern that you would have a problem with any of the recommendations that came forward out of those voluntary citizen committees. So I do have to express my concern about the lack of concern about their voluntary hours and about the process that they went through to come forward with that list. Our board considered this list twice in March and in April, and I'm sure the City Planning Commission did the same thing.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance, ordinance number zero-eight dash one-zero-four-four-six on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance zero-eight one-zero-four-four-six on second reading, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Joka?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Nay.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Mayor Vaneer?
Nay. Motion passes three to two, with Vaneer and Peck voting against.
Item eight point three, resolution number zero-eight sixty-five sixteen, authorizing an engineering agreement with Booker Willis and Ratliff for the Markley Magnolia Valley View Sanitary Sewer.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In April of two thousand and seven, a study session was held to discuss the sanitary sewer system for the Markley Magnolia and Valley View area. The project includes the design of what I call the backbone for the gravity sewer system and up to two wastewater pump station, stations. The master plan included a one wastewater pump station scenario with an estimated construction cost of one point seven million, and a two wastewater pump station scenario with estimated construction costs ranging from one point four to one point six million. The difference for these costs is basically with the one pump station scenario, we typically see that the sewers and pump stations would be deeper, and possibly some of the line sizes might be larger. The, the master plan, final recommendation was for the two wastewater pump station scenario. Once the field survey is completed and the geotechnical work is completed to determine if there's groundwater or rock, a confirmation of these total project costs will be completed. At this time, we feel that there's some concern about whether the one pump station or two pump station scenario is the best alternative because the costs were so close, and typically you will find that the utilities department has a desire to reduce numbers of pump stations as opposed to increase it. So for that reason, we'll be taking a very hard look at this to confirm which is the best alternative, and this time we'll have good information to do that work with once that work is completed. The agreement includes the survey and design services, and will be complete in about five months or about the middle of October, which will give us time to get that project reviewed and checked and ready for a bid for the two thousand and nine CIP projects. The consultant or BWR will help advise the city and coordinate procurement of all the necessary subsurface investigations with the geotechnical firm. The costs for that are not included in this agreement, they will be under a separate agreement with the city of Salina and the chosen geotechnical firm. The agreement is written with an amount not to exceed of one hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. The funds for this agreement will be allocated from the construction fund and will be rolled into a special assessment, a project temporary note in two thousand and nine. Any deferred assessments or city at large portions will be paid out of the water and sewer fund. The total estimated construction cost for this proposed sanitary sewer improvements is one point six million. Staff recommends that the city commission approve resolution number zero-eight six-five-one-six, authorizing an agreement with Booker Willis and Ratliff Corporation in amount not to exceed of one hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. Todd Anderson with BWR is here today, and at this time, Mr. Anderson and I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of staff? Ms. Tasker, fewer moving parts is always a better option.
It is, in my opinion, also. We have fifty-nine, so I'm not interested in making it sixty-one unless it's most cost-effective.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Public comment? Now I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Maybe I move that we approve resolution zero-eight dash six-five-one-six, authorizing an engineering agreement with Booker Willis and Ratliff for the Markley Magnolia Valley View Sanitary Sewer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution zero-eight six-five-one-six, authorizing an engineering agreement with Booker Willis and Ratliff for the Markley Magnolia Valley View Sanitary Sewer System. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes five-zero.
Mayor Vaneer, I move that the city commission recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege, and reconvene in this room at five-seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes five-zero. Just paid any action? No action, thank you, we're in executive session.